Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Citrus Heights Prospective Council Candidate Workshop. It's great to see so many community champions in the room this evening. Thanks so much for spending your time exploring the potential of community leadership. Our goal this evening is to give you all the information that you need as you explore community leadership, and that will happen in three segments this evening. First, you will hear from retiring council member Jeannie Bruance on the experience that she has had over her long council member career. Second, you'll hear from city manager Ashley Feeny on the City of Citrus Heights governance and all that includes. And finally, you will hear from the staff before you, who represents department and disciplines that make up the body of work that is Citrus Heights. So, very excited that you're here to learn all of that and very excited to share with you. It is my honor to introduce now retiring city council member Jeannie Bruance. Jeannie is considered a founding mother of the City of Citrus Heights, being heavily involved in its incorporation when she was CEO of the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce, and she began her council service in 2002. Do I have that right, Jeannie?
Yes. Elected calendar distinction.
Thank you, yes, important elected calendar distinction. She began her service in 2002 and has a plethora of service and contributions and experience that she is very kindly sharing with you here this evening. Jeannie, would you like to come on up?
Well, I want to thank you all for coming tonight. It's really a joy to see some familiar faces and an equal joy to see some faces that I don't know. So, I'm real excited about your interest in possibly running for city council. So, I'm going to try to do this without my reader glasses, but I may not be successful. So, I usually just like to talk to people, but I've got a lot of information I'd like to impart to you, so I'm going to have notes tonight. And so, I'm not going to do a PowerPoint, so you just have to look at me and listen, okay? So, the first thing I'd like to talk about, well, I'd like to break up my presentation into two segments. One is on campaigning and one is on serving. So, there are two very distinctive roles in the effort to become a city council member. So, I'd like to talk a little bit about campaigning because one of the things that I experienced early on in my council career, for about three years, I was on the city council and I was still running the Chamber of Commerce, and we were housed over at Fountain Square Drive on the city property. So, people would come in from time to time and ask me if they could talk to me about running for city council. And so, I felt it was important to talk to pretty much anyone that was interested, so we'd sit down and we'd chat. And when I would talk to them about campaigning, their eyes would get really, really big, like they'd ever thought of that, that they have to actually do something really definitive to get elected. So, that's where I'm going to start today. So, my first pointer to you is to take advantage of the Fair Political Practices Committee classes that they offer. And called the FPPC for short, they offer a class at every campaign season on campaigning, on doing it right, playing by the rules, and not getting yourself in trouble. And so, I went to this at every, each one of the five terms that I ran because I don't remember things from four years to four years, so I wanted to make sure that I was running my campaign correctly. Also, I want you to know that Amy Van, our city clerk, is your best friend during your campaign season. She will help you get your campaign package together, and she'll be talking more this evening about what that looks like. She'll explain it to you, and she will remind you of when to get your campaign reports in, because there are reports that are due at specific times. But it's your responsibility to file them, not hers. So, if you don't file on time, you will hear about it, okay? So, next, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about outreach and this and how you market yourself, how you campaign. And this has certainly changed over time. When I, in each of my elections that I ran in, I never used social media, and it was there for the last one, but I'm not a social media kind of person, so that was not part of my plan. But I can tell you that going forward, it will play a relevant role, I think, in any campaign on any level. So, first of all, let's talk a little bit about signs. You'll see signs, you've saw them recently, and you'll see them again as November gets closer. Signs cannot go on public property. They can only go on private property with the permission of the property owner. Now, you will see signs that are illegally placed on public property, but they are illegal. And so, I would encourage you, again, to play by the rules, get the permission of property owners to put your sign on their property, and have a nice-looking sign that says who you are, what you want to do. The other thing, oh, the other thing is, don't attach your sign to someone else's campaign sign. I've seen that too, where you've got a, let's just say, someone running for Assembly's got a big sign, and a couple of people will attach their signs. That's not legal. That's their spot, not yours, okay? The second part of outreach is mailers. Mailers are still important. Not everybody has internet access or is on social media. And so, I was coached well on this, and so, what I have done in each of my races is use a large-sized postcard. And we're fortunate to have A Applied Mailing here in Citrus Heights. It's our own, very own mailing house. There's a few of them in Sacramento, but I, I mean, I support local business, so I always use A Applied Mailing. And I also have used our local printer, All-Star Printing. And we have many printers in Citrus Heights and elsewhere. Again, Bill and I, Bill Van Duiker, who owns All-Star Printing, are kind of attached at the hip because together, we co-chaired the campaign for Cityhood. So, I've known Bill for a good 30, 35 years, and he is my personal printer, so he prints for my campaign as well. One of the things you'll need to do is to get a precinct list from the county voter registration office. And you'll want to know what precincts are in your district, because that's all you want. You don't want every, because they'll charge you by how every many names or precincts you buy. And so, I think, believe they're just downloading them now. They used to give it to you on a floppy, but now they download it, you pay for it, they download it. And I would get the list, convert it to Excel, and filter it. One of the things that you'll see, oh, and when you get the list, get it with voting history. I made the mistake in one of my campaigns of not getting the voting history, so I got a list of all the registered voters, but I had no idea if they ever voted in their life. So, what I do is I go back two elections, I get the voting history for the last two elections, and I see who actually voted. Not every registered voter votes. A lot of registered voters don't vote. And in this particular election, this year, this is an off-presidential year, and historically, fewer people vote in off-years than they do in presidential election years. It's just the way it is. So, you get the list, and then you can filter it, and I eliminated everybody that hadn't voted in the last two elections. And so, I wanted to reach people that actually voted. And so, that list, I would send it to A Applied Mailing, my mailhouse, and he would do his magic with it. In the meantime, I'm having my designer, my mailer designed by my printer, and then once he, once we all agreed on what it should look like, he just emailed it to the mailhouse. So, I never had to touch anything. So, it just went from the county registrar's office to me to call and to filter, from me to the printer, and from the printer to the mailhouse, and out the door. So, it could be that simple. This is, excuse me, I get really dry when I talk a lot. This is one of my mailers from 2010. This is what the size of a large postcard is. And I have information on both sides. So, the one side, it's very colorful, and I was purposeful in that because I wanted to catch some, you know, the person's attention who saw it in their mailbox. And on the back, I've got more information where the front's visual, and of course, this is the address area. And the reason I think these are a good idea for mailers as opposed to something in an envelope is because when I get something in an envelope from someone who is running for office, I don't open it. I just throw it away. And that will happen. That's historically what people do. But they'll at least look at something like this. Even if they don't read the whole thing, they'll look at it. So, that's my encouragement to you on that. Okay, social media and website, you know, it's kind of a must-do nowadays, so choose your platform or platforms and do the best you can on getting your word out through social media. One of the things to know, you can, I know you can text, and you can call, you can email, because I got texts in this last campaign. But be aware of the federal laws on email spam. It is considered illegal to send unsolicited emails to people, and that's spam. So, if you're going to do email, do it for people in your own contact list that you've already had contact with, and let them spread the word to their contact lists and so on. So, be sure that you stay within the letter of the law on that. And last, not lastly, but, well, in a way, walk your precinct. You know, I walked my feet off in my first election, and I had a lot of people walking for me as well because I can't, I could never possibly reach everybody I wanted to reach. And so, for you, now that we are in districts, it's a much less arduous task because you have a much more finite area. So, if you can get a team of people to walk with you or walk for you, then you should be able to cover a lot of ground. But if you could, the more you walk yourself, people want to meet you as much as possible. They want to ask you questions, they want to shake your hand, they want to see what you're all about. So, do the hard work. Get out there and walk. And most of, you know, considering that people work, evenings and weekends are the best time to walk, and never more than two to three hours at a time, because after that, you're pretty wiped out, you're not worth talking to anyway, so, okay? Give the voters a reason to vote for you. We have historically in Citrus Heights, just by kind of mutual agreement, there's no policy on this, but we do not do negative campaigns in Citrus Heights. We talk about ourselves and our qualifications and why we think you should vote for us. So, I would urge you to do the same. I don't think it would sit well if you were to try to either talk about another candidate or someone already on the city council that you don't like. That usually leaves a bad taste in people's mouths, and it comes back to bite you more than to help you. So, talk about yourself. People want to know about you, why you're unique, what you have to offer. So, there is a voluntary pledge that we, I've always signed it, and I'm going to presume most of our council members have too, that basically says, "I will run an honorable campaign." Okay? It's voluntary to sign it. It doesn't go anywhere, it's just your pledge. Have a clear message. Keep your points to three or less. You know, why do you want to run for city council? When I was at the chamber and people used to come in and talk to me, I'd ask them, "Why do you want to run for city council?" And they'd say, "Well, I just love the city, I want to be part of the process, it feels so good." Well, that's wonderful, but I would tell them, "There's many ways you can serve the city. City council is one of them." And then, I would ask them how much money they thought they would need to raise, and then they'd go away, because they never thought of it. That usually, not one of them ever talked to me, ran, by the way. Not that I was scaring them away, but I wanted to be truthful with them. Have a ballot statement. You know, we have, we get the voter guides from the county that list the candidates in their ballot statement. It costs money to have a ballot statement. There are parameters as far as how many words you can have and so forth. Have a clear and concise ballot statement that articulates and communicates simply and readily why, what you represent, what you want to do, and why people should vote for you. You don't have to have a ballot statement. You can just have your name and maybe even your picture there and nothing, but a person that doesn't have a ballot statement is not a serious candidate, because people want to know who you are, okay? Participate in all the candidate forums that are available to you, including interviews with the Chamber of Commerce Political Action Committee, the Sacramento B editorial board, Reach Candidates Nights, which I think we'll probably have this year, the League of Women Voters, and any local invitations you get, be sure and accept those, because you will get better and better as you talk about what you're all about. Advertise in the Sentinel and the Messenger if your budget will allow it. It's pretty inexpensive advertising, and it will reach local people. And commit early, because I know that the ad space fills up pretty quickly during a political season. Candidate slates. So, often we'll get these slates of this such-and-such-and-such of a group recommends you vote for so-and-so-and-so-and-so. I've never bought space on a slate. I wasn't sure if I should or should not during my first election, but basically, these people are selling advertising. And when I saw a candidate who was very solidly grounded in one political party, showing up on the slate of the opposite political party, I knew that those slates really didn't have as much meaning as people think they might, because they'll sell the space to anybody, okay? So, if you want to use them, great, but in my home, personal opinion, I don't think that they're necessary for a local election like what we have here. Okay. Even though this is a nonpartisan position, you know, we on the city council aren't on one side of the aisle or the other politically, as far as our service to Citrus Heights, we have come in all shapes and sizes. If you are involved in a particular political party, be sure and reach out to their central committee and ask for an endorsement, or ask for an interview to be considered endorsed, because what they will do if they endorse you is when they do their doormailers to all of their, the people that are in that particular party, your name will be on there if they endorse you. So, that's just a little hint. Try and get endorsements from other people. It's good for your internet, your website presence, your printed material, and they can be some people that are prominent, but citizens, you know, that means a lot. I used to have a long list of citizens that would endorse me. And if you can, particularly if they're a prominent person, get that endorsement in writing. And we all used to make a little half-page slips that say, "I so-and-so endorsed Jeannie Bruance for Citrus Heights City Council," and sign it and date it. That's basically all it is. But that way, you have it in writing, and it adds credibility, okay? Fundraising. So, it costs money to run a campaign. There are some people that have done it very inexpensively, but if we have a vibrant election this year where we've got candidates that we have maybe, I'd love to see three or four candidates per district. I think that would be great, because that would help you do a better job of presenting yourself and differentiating yourself from the rest of the crowd. It's going to cost some money. When I campaigned, those of us who had a campaign citywide, my first election, I raised a little over $40,000. Subsequent elections, I raised about half that, and it was enough, more than, I always had money in the bank at the end of an election. So, for you, it'll be far less. Some people, just depending on how, what you want to do, how much of this you want to do, because I'm kind of giving you the whole gamut, just know that you will need to spend some money, or raise the money to spend, because that's what I had to do. I didn't have $40,000 working, just write a check and fund my own campaign. And then, save a little bit of the money for your election night party to thank the people, invite the people that have helped you and supported you, invite them over to celebrate that night and watch the election returns together. Okay, so that's all I'm going to say about campaigning. Serving, which is far more important. Once you get past a campaign and you're successful and get elected, we are elected by district. As you all know, we have three districts up, and there's two maps up there. If you're not sure what district you live in, go find where you live, and then you'll find, if you actually are up for reelection this year, for election. So, two years ago, we had two of our districts up, and this time around, we have three of our districts up. And even though we are elected by districts, when we were first faced with the fact that we're being forced to go to districts, we made a decision as a council that we would serve all of Citrus Heights. So, if someone calls me, contacts me that lives in another area of the city, I don't say, "I can't talk to you, go contact that person." I help them. And if it's, and then I would let that other council member know, "By the way, someone in your district contacted me, and you may want to make a contact with him," so that they can establish a relationship as well. So, we serve the City of Citrus Heights in our capacity. Okay, want to talk a little bit about public service versus politics. This is something I feel very strongly about, and I have tried to serve to the best of my ability. I made a commitment to myself and to people close to me that I would do my best to stay out of politics and stay on the side of public service. I think there's a very defined line there. For me, public service means putting the City of Citrus Heights first in all my decisions, regardless of how it impacts me. And I've had a few people mad at me about the way I voted, or fortunately, not very often, but it has happened. Where politics, in my definition, is making a decision that would either benefit me or put me in a favorable light of people that I want to influence, and that, to me, is politics. And so, I think that if you stay on the side of public service, where it's really all for Citrus Heights, because that's really altruistically why we're here, that you have a chance of being a really good council member. If you choose to go on the politics side, you'll be another politician, and you'll be a so-so council member at best, in my opinion. So, I challenge everybody here to think public service, not politics. And when my son was a young man and just passed being a teenager, if he wanted to make me mad, he'd call me a politician. So, he knew how I felt, okay? Watch what you say. How will it sound if you see it in print? Our first city attorney, Ruth Ann Ziegler, used to say to us, "Don't say or do anything that you wouldn't want to have make headlines on the Sacramento Bee." So, just be careful how you express yourself. It's important to be aware of that. If a reporter calls you, whether you're campaigning or serving, I like that call to go to voicemail, so I can listen to why they're calling and give myself kind of a step-back opportunity to decide when it's best to call them back. If they have a deadline, then I'm going to respect that deadline, but it gives me a chance to just kind of pause and collect myself and think about how I want to respond to what they're going to, what their topic is, because they'll usually tell you why they're calling. If the call comes in and I pick it up, I will ask if I can call them back, and I will tell them, "Just, I'll call you back in a few minutes," and that, again, gives me a chance to collect my thoughts, because reporters can go right in for a zinger if they're looking for a headline, or if it's a slow news night. And that way, you will build up respect with reporters and people that represent publications, and they will, over time, call you and ask your opinion on things, "What do you think?" You know? So, that's a little clue there. Remember, you are always representing Citrus Heights as an elected official, whether you are officially in a council meeting, at an event, or bumping into someone at the post office, which happens to me all the time. And so, people often will stop and want to ask me a question or register a complaint or a thought, and so, it's not always convenient for me, but I stop, listen to them, and sometimes I just give them my card and say, "Could you please just email me with more details so that I know how to handle this for you?" So, it's, they will approach you when it's important to them, and I think that that's a courtesy as a council member to respect that. I often tell people that I can't do anything for you. I'm just a conduit of information to the people that really get the job done, and that's staff. So, I mean, honestly, I can't go out there and fix a pothole, but I know who can. So, as a council member, that's basically what we do, you know? We will listen, we will advocate if it's necessary, but we, it always gets handed off to someone who can actually fix the problem, whether it's a homeless camp, a pothole, someone's tree fell down, whatever, okay? So, I try to remember that, I'm just a pipeline. Council work and assignments. So, we meet the first, or pardon me, the second and fourth Thursday of the month, and in July, we are changing our time from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM, so our meetings will start at 6:00 PM. We do sometimes have closed sessions before a meeting, and that's only on topics that deal with personnel or a potential lawsuit, potential litigation. And I say "potential" because it doesn't have to have happened, but if, so those are the two main reasons we would have a closed session. And a personnel issue could just be talking about what should the salary be for this position, kind of thing. But they are confidential, so if you're a council member, you should not discuss what's set in a closed session with anybody but the people that are in that closed session, and that includes your spouse. So, one of the things we used to say is no pillow talk, because we had an incident once where someone did mention something to a spouse, and it got back to the person, this is several years ago, the person on staff who the closed session was about, and it was not pleasant. So, don't be that council person. Council committees, oh, excuse me, regional assignments. We all have a regional assignment. Mine happens to be the glamorous sewer district. I've been on the sewer board as long as I've been in the council, and I've learned a lot about civil engineering. I've had some great, great opportunities and experiences being, I've learned so much. And except for Don Nattoli, I'm the longest-serving member on the sewer district as well, so I'm going to say goodbye to them when I say goodbye to city council at the same time. So, consider your life, your job requirements, your family requirements. These are assignments that we all have. We have transportation, air quality, cable TV, library, there's various ones, RT. Some of the meetings are at night, some, most of them are during the day, and so, you need to have the flexibility for that. Up until COVID, we always met in person. Then, of course, we went remote, and now they're trying to drag us back downtown, and nobody wants to go, so it's kind of a hybrid, you know? My meetings were at the County Board of Supervisors building on 8th Street, and that's just such a lovely drive into central Sacramento, you know, on a weekday. So, be aware of that. You will have an assignment outside of city council representing the city in these regional meetings. And then, we have council committees. They're just internal within the city. They're, I've sat on the education committee, I've sat on the quality of life committee, I've sat on the financials, or finances committee, and we have one for park and fire, and they meet as needed. And they're usually a one-hour meeting, maybe a couple of times a year, maybe more if necessary. Then, there are optional things you can do. We have League of California city conferences. We have a big one every year. They flip it between Northern California and Southern California. Those are great to go to, especially for a new council member, because you go to classes and learn a lot. There is the, they have a regional chapter here in Sacramento that goes from Sacramento County all the way up to the Oregon border. We move those meetings around, and they meet periodically. There's the cap-to-cap trip, which is put on by the Sacramento Chamber, which is a big lobbying trip that happens every spring, where you go to Washington DC and you work for three days, nonstop, on your feet, in front of Congress representatives, Senate representatives, committees, and you work as part of a team to advocate for whatever team you're on. I've served on education and workforce development. I've served on water quality. Those are the two ones I've served on because of my sewer board experience, and I've always had a heart for education and workforce development. Then, there are other local optional things you could do as well. We get invited to all the ribbon cuttings that the Chamber of Commerce puts on. I make the ones I can, are the ones that I feel I should be. Not all of them are as important as others. If someone has ribbon cutting because they've got new furniture, I don't feel obligated to go to that, but if it's a new business, you absolutely want to show support if I can. Celebrations, neighborhood meetings, yours and others, and various community projects. In addition to this, we have two strategic planning workshops every year, in the spring and in the fall. And this is where the council gets together with staff, and we have a facilitator, and we strategically plan what's going to happen in the next six months. We do three-year planning, and we do long-term planning. And our city manager, Ash Feeny, sorry, yes, Feeny, we got a little tongue-tied, has been great in bringing back feedback to our council meetings, so that the public can know what progress we've made on those, okay? So, some other miscellaneous things. One is... One is we do get paid. We are paid a whopping $600 a month for our service. So don't plan on, you know, going to Europe on that. And we also get another $600 a month in benefits and you can choose what that looks like. Health insurance, we have a 457 retirement plan, it's a deferred comp plan, which is great to participate in so, because the city makes a contribution to that every month and it grows over time. And so personally, I've used the medical when I've needed it, but most of my compensation, my $600 plus my other, I've put away in a 457 plan. And after 20 years, it's, it's, it's grown. It's not grown so much this year, but it's grown and it's a big piece of my retirement, my retirement plans. So in addition to that, all employees and council members get vision and dental insurance at no cost to you. And I'm going to have to figure that out when I retire. I'll have to brush my teeth better or something. And if you were unfortunate enough to pass away while you're on the council, your loved ones would get $100,000 death benefit through a life insurance policy. So those are the benefits that you get for being on city council. We are all subject to the Brown Act. You've probably heard that term from time to time and basically it's a law that says you can't do backroom deals. So if a council member, our business needs to be performed or carried out in the public eye, that's the law. So if you have a, a project as a council member and you want to get a, another council member to kind of be on your side, so to speak, what, you want to get them, you want to get, you can only talk to one. So I can't talk to Tim back there and say, hey, Tim, this is coming up. I really like your support on it because I support it. And, oh, Tim Schaefer, I should acknowledge you, one of our, our vice mayor sitting in the back, making sure that I don't tell, tell a lie. Uh, Tim? Make it, make it true. And then, I, then I can't go and talk to another council member too. You, and you have to be very careful about this through electronic email and things like that. Council members have gotten themselves in some jurisdictions in a lot of trouble for violating the Brown Act. It's a big, big no-no. So no more than two council members together can conduct, can, can discuss council business or seek a position if you do it privately. You can do all you want in front of the public from the dais and you've seen us do that. So then, also, when, when you are, when we are working on a project, when, a lot of our voting goes on things like sunrise tomorrow, that's going to go on for years and there'll be votes along the way about things that, that have to happen. When there are projects that, and that's, that's a really big example, but there are other ones. Let's just take the medical building that was built. Sometimes developers and, and owners of businesses will want to meet with you privately to kind of feel you out and, and have you hear what they have to say and kind of get a soft commitment from you. So just be careful. You know, we, we are, we are supposed to be coming into our council meetings as neutral as possible so we can hear both sides of an issue and make our decision based on the facts as we see them. So we do get approached from time to time. On, on the sewer board, I get approached all the time because that's, they got big money going into sewers. I don't meet with those people. I just don't, as a policy, because I don't know enough to know what to ask in a lot of those. So it's better, it's all done and I can hear, have the advantage of hearing input from all the professionals on both sides of the issue and my fellow board members, because a lot of them are, well, one of them, Carrie Howell from Folsom, she is a civil engineer. And so she understands all that stuff, so it's good to listen to that. Also, if you're have, if you have a conflict of interest, you need to recuse yourself. And I've had to do this twice in my council career. The first one had to do with a mobile home issue that we had back in 2006. If you live, and that was kind of an odd one because it had, didn't have anything to do with development, it had to do with an ordinance, whether it would pass or not on rent control. If you live or own property within 500 feet of a, uh, project, you are assumed to have a built-in conflict of interest. And so we have a map, it's in several places in, in City Hall, that shows where each of us lives and there's that 500-foot radius around our home so that we know if that project is within that circle, we can't vote on it. So the second one is the Arcade Triple Creek Corridor, the trail that's being done. That's right behind the development that I live in. I live off of Watchtale and it starts there. No one had to tell me I had a conflict of interest on that one because I can see it right through my neighbor's backyard. So when that topic, so that's an ongoing one, the mobile home one that was done years ago, this is ongoing. If it's, if it's on the agenda for a council meeting, I have to recuse myself and leave the room. So I can't be, I can't even be present. So that's how that works. There are other kinds of conflict of interests that could come up where you just, you just don't vote on something. One that comes to my mind is years ago when Roberta McGlashan was on the council, we had to vote on an expansion of Target or something to do with, with Target back in that day. And she volunteered, it might have even been a consent item. She volunteered, she says, you know, I am going, out of an abundance of caution, I'll never forget how she said it, out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to excuse myself and not vote on this because I have stock in Target. Now, that was just, and she just made that public announcement and she didn't vote. So she was, uh, not sustain, what's the word I'm looking for? Anyway, she didn't vote on it. And that was just, she could have voted on it, no one would have ever known, but in her own conscience, she felt that that was the right thing to do. So those things come up. Okay. The last thing on this before I get into some wrap-up thoughts are, we do have some disclosures that we have to file every year. There's the Form 700 and the Form 460, which is your financial interests. And on 700, it talks about whether you own property, whether you have investments. You don't have to tell all your personal information, but if they want to know, if you've got a financial interest, what to look out for. This all goes to the, the FPPC and through our city, uh, city clerk. And the Form 460 is the fundraising form that you file periodically when you're in campaign mode. Okay? And then after that, is it twice a year you meet afterwards? Twice a year for 460, yeah, just, even if you haven't raised any money or spent any money, you just go zero, 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 zero and you, and you file it. Okay. So I hope you gleaned something from that. So I just want to wrap up a few personal thoughts. First of all, I've been around the city since the beginning because I worked on, on the incorporation effort and I ran the chamber and, you know, I moved here in 1984 from Southern California and by 86, I was a board member on the chamber and by 89, I was the president when cityhood was really heating up and the, and this county, and was taking us head-on. And the, they actually had a ballot measure in early 90s to consolidate the boundaries of the city and the county of Sacramento so that we would look like San Francisco. They have the San Francisco city and the Sacramento, San Francisco county, but they're the same boundaries. And that went down in flames. That did not pass, thank goodness. Had it passed, there would have been no more incorporations in Sacramento County. Rancho wouldn't be Rancho, Elk Grove wouldn't be Elk Grove and Citrus Heights wouldn't be Citrus Heights. So that died. So, um, so I was asked to run in 98 and I was also asked to run in 2000 and I declined from various people. I felt, I was running the Chamber of Commerce, it was kind of a conflict of interest and I wasn't interested. But in '02, I was asked separately by three different council members to run because Tim Rainey, one of our original council members was, had bought a house in Granite Bay. You can't live in Granite Bay and serve on the Citrus Heights City Council, so he was going to have to resign. So he resigned about six months prior to his term being up. And I, um, I had a choice to make. I could either say, yes, I'll run, or I'll say, no, I'm not going to run, or I, the third choice was, well, I'll fill his seat while it's vacant and let someone else run. And that's kind of where I sat. Until I was just out in my garden planting flowers and I just, I just heard a voice. I don't know how else to tell you, I just heard a voice and said, you're going to run. And it scared me to death because I'd never run for anything for myself before. And it's much different to put yourself out there than it is to put out someone else or a cause. So with fear and trepidation, I, I ran for city council with a, a knowledge in my heart that I would lose, never thought I would win. So when I came in second behind James Shelby, it was a shock. It was such a shock that when I got sworn in, I didn't know enough to go sit at the dais. I went back and sat in the audience and Brad Daniels said, get up here. And so that started my, my career on city council. And I have to tell you, it's been a great run. You know, I've, I've run for five terms and I've been blessed to come in first the other four terms. Don't know why you guys all did that, but thank you. I don't come from a family that does stuff like this. You know, my parents went to work, they went to church and they came home. And that's what we did, you know? And as kids, we didn't do community service. So it's a big departure from anything my family had ever done before. But I, I would not have missed it. I've been in the city for 38 years and 20 of those I've served on the city council. And it's been a great, great experience. Some of the things that I've been able to have a hand in are starting the Sayonara Children's Center, which is probably my greatest heart effort. I still am involved with them and what they've done, taken this little after-school program and blown it up into helping families. They've got services for kids all through high school, they've got parenting classes, they do so much for these, these kids that don't have what you and I have as far as a chance in life. It's been amazing. Many of their students have gone on to college. Had a hand in starting the community garden, got myself in a little bit of trouble on that because I came back from a League of California Cities Conference with this beautiful, colorful brochure about community gardens and I was so excited about it because we're suburbia, you know? So I, I presented to the council and I got pushback, like, well, this needs to go to committee. You know what? You know, you're overstepping your bounds. And I'm going, oh, you know, I was still pretty green. So they challenged me, they said, we don't even know if people want that. So they challenged me to visit every neighborhood association and see if there was support for it. So I did that. It took two or three months and then there was a lot of support, fortunately. Had a meeting on a Saturday with probably 50 people, it was amazing. Republic, which is then BFI, kind of sponsored it. And we, the corner that we have, we rent that for a dollar a year, the city does, over the Sylvan Corner there. And these folks put together a nonprofit and they grew a community garden. One of the nice things about, I think, being an effective council member is if you, if you have a vision for something, you don't have to stay in the middle of it. You know, you find the people that are going to run with it and make it bigger than what you are. Okay? Help the, the Werner neighborhood, that we've got a neighborhood of, of people that live off of Greenback and Werner right by 80 that are inside our, our boundaries. And when Alaska drew the boundaries, they included this neighborhood, but they had a Sacramento address. So they always felt like stepchildren, a few hundred people, or a few hundred homes back there. So they came to me and asked me, we want to be, we want our address to say Citrus Heights because we're in the city, we vote on everything, we get city services, it's very confusing. So Henry Tango was our city manager at the time and the two of us took it on, had to deal with the post office, which was amazing experience. Went all the way to DC, but we got it done. And I still have thank you cards from these people because they now feel like they're really part of Citrus Heights. In my, in my role on the sewer district, I helped the Chapelview Homeowners Association get online from a private sewer system that was failing and keeping them broke with, using all their HOA fees to upgrade and get into the public system, freeing up that money to repair the other things that needed addressing in, in their community. And so I just want to wrap up to say that most of the things that I've done that I find very meaningful in my role as a city council member aren't things that have made headlines. Most of them are things that have happened when people have come to me for help and I've been able to help them. And so it may not be glamorous or sexy, but it made a difference in their lives. And for that, I'm very grateful. And so for those of you who decide to go on and run, I wish you the very best and I want to thank you for coming tonight. That's it.
Thank you so much, Jeannie.
I'm going to introduce our city manager, Mr. Ashley Feeny, who we affectionately called Ash. So come on.
And friends, while Ash is joining us at the podium, I was negligent in my emcee duties. And I want to make sure you know that after you hear from City Hall staff, you will also hear from our city clerk on the candidate filing process. So you have a comprehensive understanding of all of the to-dos should you decide to go for it. And then after that, there will be time for Q and A. So if you have questions, be sure to write them down or mentally note them and we'll be happy to answer them at the end, okay?
Great. Well, good evening, Ashley Feeny. I serve as your city manager. And I just want to first start off by really acknowledging Jeannie for putting this together. You can see 25 years on this banner in front of the podium here. Jeannie's been here for all 25 and then some and had so much of her in our cityhood effort that's led us to where we are today. And just, I think, in that same vein of service, putting this together tonight, I think is very generous to do, to share your experience in service with others that may have an interest in serving. So thank you for that. Just, how about one more round of applause for Jeannie? All right. Well, as I mentioned, I serve as your city manager, Ashley Feeny. I started at the end of January, I was appointed by the city council. And I've been in that time since then, getting to know the community, spending a lot of time with neighborhood associations, service clubs, our city council members, our terrific professional staff that you'll get to hear from tonight. And just a lot of cups of coffee and, and getting to know people. And it's, it's been a, it's been a, it's been a great start. I feel like it's really helped us focus on where the community's at and some of the things that their desirous have seen and the, you know, the days and years to come. So it's been a terrific start and I appreciate everybody coming tonight, really do. I'll talk a little bit about the city council, city manager form of government. First off, with the city council, who, as you know, is elected by the residents of the city. They are here at the high level to provide us, from a staff perspective, with policies and priorities on the type of policies that they believe are in the best interests of the people they represent, their constituents in the community. So they're the policymakers, they establish what priority they'd like to see things get done in. And they also act as our legislative body. So if there's a public hearing, for instance, they'll go and handle that public hearing. If we have an ordinance that the city council wants to put forward to respond to an issue that's of concern to them and there's constituents, they'll deliberate on a public hearing on that and look to pass an ordinance. Or they may amend an ordinance that might need a little work, or they may rescind something that doesn't make sense anymore. So they're our legislative body and handle those type of matters. They also appoint a city manager and a city attorney. Our city attorney, who you'll hear from their office later this evening with Chelsea, they serve as our legal counsel on a variety of city matters. A city manager, speak to that. A city manager is appointed to really handle the day-to-day operations, work with the staff team to put together a budget that speaks to the expenditures that are necessary to provide high levels of service to the city. And then also work on a variety of special projects, and I'll expand on those in a moment. The city council also approves a budget. I just spoke to that. The budgeting process here is a two-year budget, it's a biannual budget, but it doesn't mean you just approve a budget and you see in two years. There's a lot of check-ins actually on a quarterly basis to ensure that we're tracking on that two-year budget. At the last city council meeting, we just actually had the budget, the mid-cycle check-in as well as, you know, some amendments to the budget on both the revenues and expenditures. So that's kind of a nimble document that city council members participate quite a bit in. For the city manager role, there's certainly an important part of that role is insurance compliance with our codes and ordinances. That's done throughout the entire team, whether it's a public safety matter or a planning matter. We have a number of different ordinances on the books and certainly it's my job to ensure that we're having compliance with those as it relates to city matters. Day-to-day operations, making sure that our organization is implementing the policy direction that the city council provides us. So that's one of my roles, to make sure that we're tracking on that. The, the city budget that I spoke to, our city budget, the last couple of fiscal years, fiscal year '21, '22, and then '22, '23 is approximately $35 million in general fund expenditures to provide city services. You'll see in other years, especially if you look at our 10-year forecast, that will go up in, in some cases where we're looking to, say, do some infrastructure investments in allocating some additional dollars towards infrastructures, but it's approximately about a $35 million general fund budget. The policy recommendations. So certainly we implement policies and programs. So certainly, we implement policies and programs at the direction of the city council. But it's also our job from a staff team to stay in touch with the community and, you know, be kind of on the lookout on things that we think can be beneficiary to the community and at times propose some policies or programs that we think might be interesting to the city council. So certainly, we take direction from the council, but we also want to be mindful of things that we think can help the city council and the overall city. So we'll certainly put forward policy recommendations in that vein. From a city administrative standpoint, I am responsible for our appointment of department directors and hiring staff consistent with the authorized budget and the positions that are in that. And then, of course, executing on the city council's policies and actions. Couple of things that I think are important, too, is the city council handbook you see here. This is on our webpage and I encourage everybody to take a good look at this. It's really a great document. It really lays out the roles and responsibilities of the mayor, vice mayor, city council, expectations with, interactions with the city manager, city attorney and staff. A lot of thought's been put into that. It talks about policies and procedures as it relates to being a council member. And it also provides guidance on having good relationships. And I think for me, as a city manager, I think relationships really matter. Certainly, staff team with the community, with our partner agencies and between the city manager and city council. I, I always want that to be a very positive relationship. Certainly, sometimes a city manager has to make recommendations that not every council member's going to agree with or may not be popular, but you're making those in the best interests of what you see the city based upon a professional opinion coming forward. But I think it's important to have a lot of communication and you want to establish a relationship that, to me, good relationships are built on mutual respect for one another. And also, you want to really kind of build some trust with each other. And I think when you have that, those two things, good things can happen. And you, you know, develop that trust, so when you're kind of working through a tough issue, you've got that as your baseline. So that's certainly something that I endeavor to do with council members. I also think the best city managers ensure that city council members all have equal information. You don't want a city council member to have information that another council member doesn't have. That's a good way for a city manager to get himself in trouble or herself in trouble. So ensuring that city council members have equal information, I think, is important for that relationship. And you want to have intentional communication and avoid surprises. And that could be a variety of ways, whether it's grabbing a cup of coffee or, or having some lunch or a phone call or sending out updates periodically on, on city business. Making sure that you have intentional communication is important to keep the council up to speed on city matters. And nobody likes surprises. You know, I, I know council members don't love surprises, don't love hearing things that they probably felt that they should have heard from the city manager or staff, hearing that out in the community. So that's something we endeavor to do. Do we get it right a hundred percent of the time? No, but we sure work to try and get it right most of the time, so. And then on the, conversely, from a city manager's standpoint and staff's standpoint, if we're going to a city council meeting and we have an item before you that we put a lot of work into the staff report and we're looking for a decision, it's always helpful to know if you have some questions ahead of time versus coming to the meeting, especially if they're going to require some research. So we can go ahead and work on that before we get to a meeting. So I think that that's really helpful, too, from a relationship standpoint, to ensure that we try to avoid surprises and do our very best when we get to the city council meetings. Some of that's spoken to in the city council handbook, too. Jeannie spoke to this as far as the strategic planning and how important that is for effective, running an effective city. Our strategic planning process, it's three-year goals. This is, we're working on the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four goals. And there's five strategic goals that are supported by a strategic objective process. So every six months, the city council meets with our executive staff team and a variety of our managers. And we go through a facilitated retreat and we come up with strategic objectives that support these three-year goals. And those objectives are implementation measures that help us arrive at achieving these goals or some measure of those. At our last retreat that we had, we went beyond the six-month goals and really developed a focused area work plan that the council actually adopted by resolution at a recent meeting where these six-month goals kind of build off each other. And so that document's going to guide us through March twenty-twenty-four at the end of the three-year goal term when we get back to the next retreat where we're revisiting these goals as an organization. Some of these may stay. It's not uncommon to see strategic goals stay for the next three-year term. Some may change or be revisited or tweaked. But having an intentional way of planning and really clarifying the mission is very important for our staff team and I think for the community, too, to understand where things are headed. For the city manager's office, some of the responsibilities of that office, as I mentioned before, developing, advising and making recommendations to the city council. I think one of the things that's important here is continuing to stay connected to the community. So we have an understanding of what's on the community's minds when we're making specific recommendations or developing a policy for council consideration. We want to be able to report out where the community's at on a particular issue of importance. So staying connected to the community is important, whether it's our residents through neighborhood associations or business community. That's certainly something that's, that's critical. And then we have three core pillars. I'd say that we always want to kind of be mindful of, are we advancing one of these three core pillars or staying true to this when we're thinking about a policy? And those are fiscal prudence. I mean, that's part of the city's foundation, is fiscal prudence and making sure that we're using those dollars in a fiscally responsible way. Public safety, making sure that we're going to continue on that commitment to providing a safe city. And wow, okay, I've got fiscal prudence, public safety. Local control, wow. Boy, losing control right there. Local control. I mean, that's how we established City of Citrus Heights. So it's really having local control, that's where cityhood was born. So those three core pillars are critical as we go about our business and developing different recommendations for council consideration. Advising the city council on the city's financial condition, as I mentioned, on the budget, the two-year budget. We want to continually ensure that the council is up to speed on where we are because critical condition, critical decisions are made based upon that budget document. And making sure that we have that budget document current based upon what we project the revenues to be and the expenditures to be at any given point in time is important. We do that on a quarterly basis and we have a finance committee that's comprised of two council members that will work through on a staff level and get some of their recommendations before we bring that back to the larger council. But we will come back to council and do a budget update every quarter and then also do a ten-year forecast. The one thing we know at a budget, it's a picture in time. Those revenues move around and so do those expenditures. That's why you've always got to continue to, to keep abreast of where you are, where you're at on that quarterly basis. City council support, that's another critical part of the city manager's office. Councilmember Brune spoke to all the different boards and agencies and two-by-tos and all those additional duties that council members take on. So we want to make sure that we're able to support council members where we can as they take on those additional duties and as well as serving their constituents as a council member. The CIP program, that's our five-year infrastructure program. You'll hear a little bit more about that from Regina Cave. But that's something else from the city manager's office that want to track very closely because there's some big dollars that are spent associated with that CIP program. And infrastructure is certainly on the mind of residents in the city. And then special projects, actually, coming out of this last retreat, we've got a number of different special projects that we're going to be working on. And those come up through the city manager's office. Just recently, the council funded a community block party trailer that you'll see a rollout on that that is allowing neighborhoods and service organizations, organizations to connect where the people are versus having to come to a facility. So I'm excited to get that out there. We also have our beautification crew that you may have heard about that is going to really kind of try to double down on cleanup of visual blight in the community and litter and so on and so forth. So those type of projects also come up through the city manager's office. Maybe if we have a new community event, that would be something that would be rolled out as well. From a city organizations chart, I spoke to this earlier, council appoints city manager and city attorney. And then our various departments and disciplines roll up through the city manager. You'll hear from them tonight, our community development, economic development and communications, our administrative services, which includes finance, also HR, human resources and our IT teams. General services is our public works arm of the city. Police, we, we know what policing is and we've got a great department here. And then our city clerk, who you'll hear from tonight as well. We have about two-hundred-and-ten full-time employees that are authorized in the city budget. Of course, that number fluctuates at any given day based upon the vacancies we have at that time. One of the things I should mention, too, quickly on the organization is we try to balance having full-time employees with some contract employees, too, to just ensure efficient delivery and not getting too heavy from an organizational standpoint. We have a number of service partners. While we provide a lot of services here at the city through our own team, we also work with other special districts to serve the community. We have, for instance, Sunrise Park and Rec District. They cover our parks within the city. Sacramento Fire responds to fire and you can see a number of others listed here for trash services, water and sewer and so on and so forth. That's different than some cities. I've worked at a city that was, that had all of those really under their own umbrella. And when you wanted something done, you would call the department head and you would work with them to try to get it done and you would control that within your organization. It's a little bit different when you have service partners. It's even, you want to have good relationships, whether they're internal or external. But it's very important to have great relationships with service partners outside your organization because oftentimes, it's about influencing them to have a certain outcome that you think's going to be beneficial for your city. So we endeavor at our staff team to have terrific relationships with our service partners, which we do. And because when we have a resident that calls with an issue, they don't distinguish if it's Sunrise, Rec and Park District or if it's the City of Citrus Heights. To them, it's the City of Citrus Heights and, and it should be. And so it's really our job then to not say, oh, why don't you call the Park District? We look into that particular issue, see how we can help, and then we go work with one of our partners to ensure that that's kind of a seamless process for our residents. So that's something that's definitely important to us as we serve the community. So that's just a little bit about the city council, city manager form of government. I kind of hit that quickly and briefly. Talked a little bit about some of our roles, but certainly, if you have any questions or want to go and do a deeper dive on anything I talked about, I'd love to talk with you and hear what might be on your mind and see if I can be helpful. But I think at this point, I want to turn it over to our team here who are going to spend a few minutes talking about each of their respective roles and responsibilities and departments. So we'll start with Casey. Casey Kempner.
Thanks, City Manager Feeny. My name's Casey Kempner. I'm the Community Development Director here. Been here for about fifteen years and it's a great place to work and we have great leadership here. So I'm blessed to, to cover four different divisions within the city. Planning, which you all see when we have new development, plant, all those applications and working with developers come through, through that division. We help people with trees and fences and all sorts of things that face your daily, daily tasks. We also are kind of the keeper of the general plan, which is the city's constitution. So we make sure that that's implemented. I'm also oversee building and safety, which those are the guys you see when you do a room, room addition or remodel or a water heater, they come make sure that it's being installed safely. They also do internal, inside the city hall, they do plan checks to make sure that plans are meeting standards. And then they also coordinate with outside agencies. As you saw on the previous slide, there's a lot of outside agencies we work with and they want to make sure that before we sign off on any plans that they're, they're meeting all our agency, partner agencies' standards. The next division is housing and grants. And that division handles our CDBG funds, which is federal dollars that we distribute to our nonprofits that we're lucky to have here in the city as well as use for some of our infrastructure that we install. We also have a first-time home buyer program and housing repair program that that division runs. And last but not least is business licensing. So any new business that comes to the city, we want to make sure that they're following the zoning regulations and that they're licensed. We issue fireworks permits, which there's fireworks out on the street today. So make sure you support those nonprofits and then massage licenses as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Megan Huber, who's our economic and communications extraordinaire.
Thanks, Casey. Hi, everyone. I'm Megan Huber. I oversee economic development and communications for our city. I like to tell folks who aren't familiar with economic development that it's essentially the sales and marketing arm of a jurisdiction, which means it involves four things. First, it involves business attraction. An example of a win in that category would be our successful recruitment of Green Acres Nursery. Some current projects include our Sunrise Tomorrow Plan, the specific plan to redevelop Sunrise Mall. Another example of how I spend my time is recruiting new business to the vacant theater site at our Citrus Grove Shopping Center on Auburn and eighty. Past that really hefty business attraction lift, I also oversee business retention and expansion, making sure the businesses that are here stay here and stay healthy, provide triage services if they're at risk in any way. Also provide startup support to entrepreneurs, our home-based businesses, which is significant here in Citrus Heights. It makes up about half of our total business licenses. And finally, marketing, making sure that we're telling the story of our Citrus Heights business community and continuing to build on those successes with effective marketing. The second hat that I wear is communications, telling our Citrus Heights story. So hopefully, it's part of the reason you got here, that you saw this workshop was an opportunity to learn on one of our social media channels or maybe an email that you received. We do our best to share everything going on inside of City Hall and also outside of it. We do our best to make sure we raise the visibility of Citrus Heights regionally and even sometimes nationally, in the case of our Sunrise Mall project. So that's a little bit about economic development and communications. And now I would like to pass it to Susan Talwar, who oversees administrative services.
Thank you. So as mentioned, I am the Director of Administrative Services. And our, our department is comprised of three divisions. As you can see here, we have finance, human resources and information technology. Did I do that?
Must be an IT issue.
Had to happen, right? When I say information technology, right? So basically, what we do is we help support all these wonderful programs and projects that you are learning about today. And it is our duty to adhere to the city's pillar as center, as, excuse me, City Manager Feeny talked about, the financial prudence. So on finance, as mentioned earlier, we do have a two-year budget cycle with mid-year reviews and also quarterly reviews and other updates as needed. We also do have a ten-year financial planning and projections, which provides a long-term view of the city's finances. It enables the organization to have better understanding of revenues and expenses and also drivers and uses of balances. At times, as mentioned earlier, we will meet with Finance Committee, which consists of two city council members. And last but, well, certainly, next is Human Resources. So our focus there is on staff training and also wellness programs, maintaining a healthy workforce. And also, we want to strive to be an employer of choice so that we can continue to better serve the community. And last but not least, we have, from an IT perspective, the city does utilize various technologies and systems. So it is our role to keep current on those technology and trends, providing staff with efficient and effective tools from computers and software to the PD Patrol car technology and to customize reporting and applications. And that will provide us with great customer service to the public. With that, I'm going to pass it over to our General Services Director, Regina Cave.
Thank you, Susan. I'm going to address this on the tall one of the group here. My name is Regina Cave and I have the honor and the pleasure of leading the General Services Team here at the City of Citrus Heights. I've been here a little over twenty-two years, so I'm kind of a vast of historical knowledge and one of the long-term city employees here. And within General Services, we're kind of a non-traditional public works department in that while we have a lot of core functions that we manage through our General Services Department, a lot of the services that we provide to the community and what the community sees are actually provided through contract services. Again, that provides greater flexibility and also supports, as City Manager Feeny mentioned, about our fiscal prudence. We're allowed, we, it enables us to control our costs a lot better when we do need to tighten up our belts a little bit. So in no particular order, because all of our four divisions in General Services are all equally important, we do have our Engineering Division, which is charged with our capital improvement program, as City Manager Feeny mentioned. They develop and deliver the transportation and drainage projects throughout the community. You've probably seen a couple of big projects within the last six months or so that we've completed. completed. One of them is our Benita Way Gary Oak Twin Oaks Drainage Project, and that project addressed localized flooding that was identified in some of our drainage master plans. And we've also just completed our Mariposa Avenue Saferouts to School Phase Four Project, which provided the last piece of connectivity for ADA pedestrian and bicycle connectivity between Greenback and Madison. So we have continuous connectivity through that entire stretch of Mariposa. Engineering is also charged with citywide ADA pedestrian and traffic safety improvements. This is anything from traffic signal upgrades to allow for ADA and pedestrian crossings at any of our intersections, our major intersections throughout the community, traffic control issues through neighborhood, any of the neighborhoods throughout the community as well. Engineering is also charged with development project review and inspections. Partnering with Casey's team, our engineering staff reviews all of the engineering plans that come through for all development projects, ensuring compliance, not only with our standards, but then any of the improvements that they construct that we consider public improvements that we will essentially take ownership of our, do meet our standards. And then our engineering staff also administer engineering grants. So most of our construction projects, from conception through planning, design, and construction, are funded by grant funds. We've mentioned through the years at various meetings, if you've attended, that we leverage a lot of our local funds to obtain larger grant dollars to support our projects. And then street lighting and traffic signals is also administered through our Engineering Department, through our city engineer, and stormwater compliance to make sure that we are in compliance with not only regional, local, state, and federal Clean Water Act requirements. Then our Operations and Maintenance Division is charged with blight and abatement and public rights of way. As City Manager Feeny mentioned, we have a big project that we're rolling out shortly, which is our beautification crew, and they will be charged with ensuring that we can keep our city as clean as possible and reflect the true community that we are. We also charge with citywide landscape and tree maintenance. This is not only along our major arterials, but our 11 landscape maintenance assessment districts. We are also charged with encroachment, monitoring, and inspections. You probably see a lot of utility companies doing work within our public rights of way, so our staff is responsible for making sure that they are not only complying with our rules, but also making sure that they're keeping the streets safe when they're doing their work. We maintain our creeks and our city-owned greenbelt, so we have over 27 miles of creeks, plus about additional two and a half to three miles of concrete line channels and canals that we maintain. And then we also maintain our transportation and drainage maintenance. So what you see at the surface, but also what you don't see underneath, about a million miles of, excuse me, a million feet of drainage pipe. Then our Community Services Division handles all of our customer support and our program support. So when you call in and you say, hey, we have a pothole, or a tree is blocking a sign, that's my department, my division that takes care of that, and we hope that we respond quickly to you. We have our citywide solid waste recycling and organics program that is administered through our Republic Services, again, an extension of our department, which is contract service. We have our citywide street sweeping services, which again is another extension of our contract services. And then we have programmatic grants programs. So this is stuff like our multimodal transportation safety program. When folks call in or, we get requests to address some traffic control or some safety issues within the neighborhood associations, we look at that and we evaluate how to best serve those issues. And then we have our Public Transportation Services, which is a partner with our regional transit. And then last but not least, Facilities, which we're hoping you enjoy our beautiful, comfortable building this evening. Facilities is charged with maintaining all of our buildings and grounds, including city hall, the community center, Police Department, and our two other smaller community centers, which is the Cyanar After School Center and the Sylvan Community Center. And they are also charged with maintaining the community center operations, so for all rentals of our large community centers down the street. They're also charged with community events, hosting, co-hosting Sunday Fun Day. We also have our holiday tree lighting event here in December every year. And administering any of our facilities' capital improvement projects, so any kind of TI improvements or expansions of any of our facility buildings. And then lastly, our city fleet management, all of our non-PD fleet, so a fleet that supports building, planning, and our General Services Department. And so with that, I will pass it on to our Police Chief Turkot.
Thank you very much. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Alex Turkot. I'm your Chief of Police. For the next three hours, we're going to take a deep dive into the Police Department here in Citrus Heights. Three minutes?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, man, I'm going to have to adjust some of my editing. These are the jokes, folks. That's all we got, otherwise it'd be a little too dry for you. All right, so for our Police Department, obviously, as City Manager Feeny had said and the rest of the team, police are pretty visible out there in the community. Obviously, people believe that they know that what the police do, but to highlight for you for Citrus Heights, our number-one priority, obviously, is life safety and protection of property out there in the City of Citrus Heights. But more than that, along the pillars of local control and fiscal responsibility, we take a real partnership with our community and a team concept to ensure, limited resources that we have, we're using to the best of our ability throughout the city. So like I said, life safety has to be their number-one concern, crime prevention, traffic enforcement, then quality of life concerns, and those are concerns that greatly affect kind of the perception of how we feel with a vibrant community. A safe community is a vibrant community, but also the perception of safety and being able to quietly use services that are accessible to all is a huge part of what we try to do. So our goal is while you're moving down the road in Citrus Heights, you feel safe and protected, that you're taking care of your property, your neighbors are taking care of their property, and all of our business owners and community members are held accountable to the community standard of making sure we all have a vibrant and a nice community. Because if we all take care of each other, the whole city rises, everybody benefits, is the way that we look at that. We are a strong foundation on community policing, and I know that is a buzzword in our industry sometimes, but from 2006, this agency was truly built on a community policing model, where we engage with all sections of our community, our neighborhood associations, our business associations, random people that want to come into the office and have a chat with me from time to time. We really want to focus our efforts where our community needs us the most, or even where there's the perception of a problem. And so on a monthly basis, we meet just to strategize for the next monthly period to see what's going on. You know, if there's a major crime series, that's an easy one. You know, if there's a person out there burglarizing everything, obviously, that's going to be our focus, but some of the other ones are lesser, lesser known, like, you know, some of the, the illegal camping that's going on, or illegal littering, or dumping, or, you know, all of us who live in the community probably have that one stop sign that doggone it, if people would just stop there, then, you know, we could have an issue. So I will say though, before you report that stop sign that makes you mad, make sure you're stopping completely at it, because usually when we go into a community to write tickets based on complaints, one of the community members that gets a ticket generally was the one that was making the complaint. No, not on purpose, it's just one of those do-as-I-do kind of a deals, right? So without a quick overview of our org chart, and then I'll get out of your hair. Our Police Department's separated into three major divisions. The Office of the Chief takes an entire division to deal with me, and basically, this is our overall administration, hiring, budget. It also has where our evidence and crime scene unit is. They're charged with department policies, management, and coordination of police services in the community. Separate from that, we have our Operations Division, which is pretty much anyone you see in the field. So our patrol officers, our animal control, code enforcement, our dispatch center, all fall there. And then our Special Services Division, which houses our detectives, our impact unit, which is our new kind of restructuring unit to kind of focus on community problems like we had talked about, animal services and records, which sounds like one little bullet, but the world runs on paper. An army runs on its stomach, bureaucracies run on paper, and everything we do has to get funneled through that way as well. So as far as our priorities going forward in the city, we went through a recent downsized, if you will, in, in kind of a fiscal prudence aspect. We were looking at a budget shortfall. We cut a number of positions. Luckily, ARPA came along, and our city council was very quick to act to restore those positions, so we're in what's called a rebuild mode at this moment. We always made sure the backbone, the life safety 911 response was solid, and now as we're bringing those staff back and then trained up, we're seeing the enhancement to our extra services like our motor, our motor unit, traffic response, and some of the other type of things. So with that, I will hand it over to Chelsea from our City Attorney's Office, and there we go.
Thank you, Chief. I will keep this a little shorter and sweeter with a few less jokes, so I apologize. My name is Chelsea Avant. I serve as the Deputy City Attorney, along with our primary city attorney, Ryan Jones. My specialty is primarily in the labor and employment law field. We provide legal advice and guidance to city council, to the city manager, to all the commissions, as well as all city staff and departments. The key areas of legal advice that we provide to the council, Jeannie already mentioned, are the Brown Act and all the areas with the conflicts of interest. We are usually present at all council meetings and all of the planning commission meetings, and we often help review or help draft ordinances and all the related documents that go along with that. We try to encourage all council members to, you know, use us as a resource and reach out to us anytime you have any questions, or we can provide any answers for you. So in that same vein, I would encourage all of you, if you have any questions or want to learn more about what we do and the role that we play in the city, we're more than happy, Ryan or myself would be happy to sit down with you and answer any questions that you may have. So with that, I will introduce our lovely city clerk, Amy Van.
As she stated, Amy Van, the city clerk. I've been with the city for 18 years now, so I've been through quite a few elections, and I always look forward to this time of year to meet the candidates as they come through to city hall. I really like this time of year. But the city clerk's office is a service department within the local government, and the city council, city departments, and public really rely on us for information regarding the operations and legislative history of the city. We're responsible for the city council meeting administration, posting of the city council meeting agendas, managing the necessary equipment that it takes to run an effective council meeting, such as the remote access, broadcasting it live on our city's website, on our YouTube channel, and through Metro Cable channel. We prepare accurate minutes reflecting the council's action. We act as a compliance officer for state and local statutes, including the Political Reform Act, the Brown Act, and the Public Records Act. The city clerk's office also administers the democratic processes, such as elections, access to city records, and all legislative actions of the city council, ensuring the transparency to the public. So filing for city council, so during the nomination period, we ask candidates to make an appointment with myself to review all of the documents that you see here. There are a lot of documents, and there are a lot of details to running for city council, and so it takes about 30 minutes, maybe more, to review all of this documentation with you in detail. The nomination petition that you circulate to gather signatures, the Declaration of Candidacy, which is part of the nomination document. If you choose to have a ballot designation, you'll fill out a ballot designation worksheet, the candidate statement, as Councilmember Bruins mentioned earlier, the Code of Fair Campaign Practices, the Form 700, the Statement of Economic Interest, your campaign disclosure statements, a media sheet, and the $25 filing fee. So we discuss all of these documents in detail with you when you come for your appointment, when you're interested in running for city council. Listed here are just some key dates and deadlines that we wanted to provide with you tonight. This is not an exhaustive list of all of the key dates and deadlines. We do have that information posted on our city's website, but I just wanted to kind of highlight some of them. We, obviously, the candidate filing period will be July 18 through August 12, and all forms must be filed together on August 12. And then we have some other deadlines of our pre-election statements. At the December 8 city council meeting is when the newly-elected council members will be sworn into office. And this slide here just is an overview of the city clerk's website. It's not intended for you to see it, so I apologize for the small text, but we do have a wealth of information that we've provided on the city's website to kind of guide candidates that are interested in running for city council. We have different bulleted areas with additional information on how to run, the elections calendar, campaign finance forms, information on political signs and what is allowed, and also some additional resources, including the city council handbook and a link to our strategic plan is there available so that you can go back and look at that, those documents as well. And then, of course, we have a very detailed candidate's guide that we provide candidates, and we do post a copy of that on our website so that candidates can peruse that and see what is involved and what are the filing requirements for running for city council. And then here is my contact information that you can call me, or email me, or you can also visit our website that we've created. We have a fillable form, so if you wanted to go home and online, you wanted to look at some times available, and wanted to make an appointment, you can fill out that form and provide us with your name and address, and we can make that appointment for you. But with that, thank you. I'll turn it back over to...
Do you have anything you want to wrap up with? Yeah, I'm going to do a Q and A, but is there anything you wanted to add before we jump into that? Pretty good? Okay.
Okay, so you have heard from Councilmember Jeannie Bruins on the council experience. You've heard from City Manager Feeny on local government and what it looks like in Citrus Heights, and you've heard from staff on absolutely everything that entails, as well as what declaring council candidacy looks like as well. So now is the time that we open it up for questions, and I am the designated mic passer. Do we have questions in the audience? No?
Yes, absolutely. Let me give you the mic, because this is also being recorded, and I'm sure your question would benefit.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. Just a question on conflict of interest, if you can clarify more. Something, I guess I want to make sure I understand well. If you have, let's say, like you said, that development or that path in your backyard, and you strongly believe in that, and I want to run for, you know, council to change that, but whoops, conflict of interest, because it's right in your backyard, how does that make sense? Like, if you really believe in something and you might have some personal connection there, why is that off limits?
Yeah, oh, thanks. Turn it on, it's on. I'll initially answer that, and I might ask for some info for our city attorney as well. It's assumed that if there is a project that is within 500 feet of property that you own, that if that project is successful, it could have a, an impact on the value of your property, and it could be, put you at an unfair advantage if you voted for it, and, and so therefore, if a project could enhance the value of your property, it would be a conflict of interest for you to vote on that. That's kind of simple. And perhaps, Chelsea, you want to add to that?
Yeah, sure. Everything that Jeannie just addressed is true, but these regulations aren't from the cities. They are actually based on regulations that the FPPC puts out. So there are legal regulations that we have to abide by. The city has no discretion on whether or not they enforce those.
Great question. Thanks for asking that. Let's keep it rolling, more questions.
I don't think I need a mic, but... Well, if you, if you don't mind, because we're recording.
Well, Jeannie, thank you for your service, and you're retiring, but so there's one council position with the new election. Are, is everyone rerun? I kind of forget right now. I do vote, but I don't remember how many are rerunning, and...
Three of our districts have, have, are open for reelection. So two years ago, and I always get, I'm not sure, is it, is it District One, and is Brett's and what's, one and three?
Hard.
So every two years, you either have two candidates up for reelection or three, so that we overlap, because if, if, if everybody was up the same year, you could potentially end up with a city council with five new council members, and that would be interesting. So, so we have three of our districts up for reelection this year. The council members serving in those districts now are, I, is me in District Two, Portia, Middleton, our current mayor, and what's her district number? Three? Three. And Steve Miller, who is in, he's in four. Thank you. It's all I can do to remember my own district. So the three districts, those are the three current council members, and they will have to speak for themselves, the other two, whether they're going to run or not, so, but I have these, you know, I am retiring. Okay, thank you.
And if I can take an opportune moment, as Jeannie was describing, there are certain districts up for election this cycle, and if it happens to not be a match for your resident address, I want to make sure everyone knows that there are plenty of other...
address, I want to make sure everyone knows that there are plenty of other ways to engage in your Citrus Heights community. One is Connect Citrus Heights, which is a community coalition of community organizations that are working together to make all of their programming and offerings bigger and better together and increase community connection while they do it. Another is Citrus Heights Collaborative, which is a nonprofit and health and human services-focused working group. We also have neighborhood associations. That information you can find on our city website as well. There are some really active neighborhood associations, and there are also some who are dormant right now and need of new leadership, and it would also be a great place to dig in. Another option, we have business associations that represent all three of our commercial nodes, Sunrise Marketplace, Auburn Boulevard Business Association, and Antelope Crossing Business Association. And finally, there are appointed positions on both our Planning Commission and Construction Board of Appeals. So, we make a practice of not wasting any community champion around here. If potential candidacy is not an option for you right now, please consider one of these options, because your community heart is needed.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Hi. For the council member position, what kind of time commitment is required? Is this something that a full-time employee could...
Well, you know, that's a really good question, and I get asked that a lot, and that's probably the hardest question to answer, because it varies. You know, we have two, you know, meetings that are on the calendar every second, fourth, Thursday of the month. As a new council member, I felt a bit overwhelmed by all the reading that I needed to do to kind of get up to speed, but I got to tell you, staff is really here to help us do that, you know? So, I learned to make appointments and meet with the various department heads back in my early years, because they could help me get up to speed faster than if I just read the material. So, after a while, you'll learn that, you don't deal with different projects every single meeting. Many projects go on for a period of time, and you get to know them very well, so you don't have to reread them all over again. So, it's really hard to say how much time, there have been some weeks, and I'm self-employed, so I have some discretion with my time. But, I mean, like yesterday, I had, I was at City Hall or in city meetings half my day, and some weeks, nothing. So, it just varies. When I was mayor, one of the things I learned is that I should keep my Sunday nights open, because that's when a lot of people want to email the mayor with whatever gripe they have, Sunday night, you know? The emails would come in, and so, by Monday morning, I am pretty well dispersed and responded to, but I don't know, it's just kind of getting the week started for some folks, you know? And so, a few hours, a few hours a week, some weeks heavier than others, but you do have to have some flexibility in your life to be able to respond to that.
Can I just add one quick thing? And I'll just add to, like, for your city council meetings that are on the second, fourth, Thursday of every month, we endeavor as a staff team to release the packets on Friday beforehand, so you have quite a bit of time to read through the materials and be prepared for your meeting.
Great question. Thanks for that.
And most of our council meetings are not terribly lengthy, and I think our Vice Mayor, Tim Schaefer, who had to run the last council meeting, had his baptism by fire because it went three and a half hours. That is not typical, you know? Hour to an hour and a half is about, is pretty typical for a council meeting.
Ow.
Jean, add in there the time that some of those committees, commission meetings take, because...
Okay.
Those may handle their thinking all day long, but...
Okay. Well, the commission, first of all, the commissions that you sit on are appointed by the mayor every January. So, the council, you know, requests what assignments they want, and generally, they get those. If two council members want the same assignment, and we rank them one to five, you know, and then we turn it in, and the mayor makes the decision, then they have to decide which one to give it to. I will tell you, in 20 years, no one has ever fought me for the sewer board. No one.
So, it's up for grabs.
It is up for grabs. It is a very interesting assignment. But, so, those meetings, depending on whether they go live again, you know, if they, those meetings can run anywhere for two and a half hour to two to three hours, and it just depends on the board you sit on. They meet once a month, most of them, sewer district often, well, historically, met twice a month. And when we met downtown, you know, it's a commute down to the supervisor's building on H Street, the length of the meeting, and then the commute back home. So, it took a morning, you know, those meetings took a morning. You know, recently, we've been able to get the business done in one meeting a month. If you have the Zoom option, and that's what you want to do, you can cut out the commute time. But, so, there is a time commitment for that. The committee meetings within the city themselves, you know, they run an hour, and they're every now and then. They're not all the time, they're not monthly, they're as needed, and I'd say maybe two or three times a year, if that, on some of them. Okay? That's a good question, and a hard one to answer.
Great question so far. Do we have more questions? Yes.
Do you have any, like, educational requirements or recommendations, if this is something you kind of want to do as a career path?
That's a nice question to ask. So, the question was, are there any educational requirements or suggestions for involvement, basically? So, no educational requirements. It's good if you know how to read and write, but, you know, I don't have a college degree. Some of my colleagues have very advanced degrees, so there is no educational requirement. I, when people have asked me, where should they start, I always tell them, get involved in your neighborhood association. Start as locally as you can. If you're a student, you know, student government, we often have students in our audience who are here to satisfy some government class requirement or a community requirement, and they're kind of fun to have in the audience. So, you know, learning about government is important, but I think it's equally important to learn about your community. So, volunteer. You know, we had some, a list of various agencies you can volunteer with, or if you want to, if you hear that there's a community event coming up that will involve a committee of volunteers, step up and be part of that team, and you'll get to understand and feel what it's like to work on something locally, and you'll get your name out there. You get known. When I used to run the Chamber of Commerce, new businesses would come in that just joined the chamber, and suddenly, they wanted to do a mailing to everybody so that they'd do business with them. And I would often tell them, why should I, why should I stop a business relationship I've had for the last 10 years with this person and not do business with them anymore so I can do business with you, who I don't know? And the best, and the best way to get yourself known is to work on a project together with someone, and you, when you work shoulder to shoulder with people, you really get to know them. You know their character, you know their strengths and their weaknesses, and so, that's what I would recommend. If you are interested in a career in public service as an elected official, start locally, get in a position where people will know you, and work your heart out, and they'll see that you're a valuable part of the team, and they can't do it without you. Okay?
That's right. And if I can, Jeannie, double down on those comments from a staff perspective, I want to share that your city wants to connect with you as much as you want to connect with your city. So, let's stay in touch, yeah? Cool. Okay, other questions? I'm gonna give it a minute, just in case any percolate.
I'll do a little rap now if we're done with Q and A, okay?
Sounds that way.
I had to stand up for him, and I was getting all sleepy there. No, just kidding. I just want to say thank you so much for coming out tonight and for your interest. If any of you want to follow up with me, you can email me through the city's website, and I'll give you a call, and I'll answer any other questions that you might have. As I said, just want to restate, it's been a joy. It was a hard decision, but I knew that this was the time, and so, it's been a joy to serve the city. We, I think, are an exceptional city. We have phenomenal staff. I mean, we really are blessed with, in all departments, that we have such qualified people, and our new City Manager, Mr. Ashley Feeny, has been just the perfect, the perfect selection to lead our team into the future. And so, it's time for some younger blood. So, let me know if you're interested, and I just wish you well, and again, thank you so much for coming tonight.